13, 2015 Meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. Welcome to everyone joining us today here in the council chambers as well as those watching or listening through Oshkosh Community Media Services. We're happy to have citizens participate in their government in any way, so welcome to all. First, we would like to introduce a new staff member, Mr. Mauer or Mr. Roff.
It's a new staff member in a new position, but it's a familiar face. For those of you who've been over at the Senior Center before, you'll recognize Kathy Snell. Kathy is our new Special Events Coordinator. She was previously the office manager over at the Senior Center. Kathy has done a lot more over at the Senior Center, behind-the-scenes type of things, working on a lot of events at the Senior Center, so she really showed her skills and we're looking forward to her helping us coordinate all the special events that we have. She'll be leading the Special Events Committee and coordinating that and really taking care of things that maybe the Special Events Committee doesn't necessarily need to take care of that can be done just administratively. And of course, the happiest person in the room is not Kathy, who's very excited about her position, but our city clerk, Pam Ubrich, who will now relinquish her duties as chair of the Special Events Committee. And you'll notice, she is not shedding a tear, but you've accepted the position and so you're stuck, so thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, at this time, I would like to ask the city clerk to take the roll call.
Allison Osby, here.
Herman.
Here.
Peck.
Pansky.
Here.
Stepanik.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Current six.
Next, we'll have the invocation, which will be led by councilmember Allison Osby. After that, the pledge of allegiance by Delaney Rudinger, Maria Castle from Emmerlin Elementary Cook School, and Samantha Brown from Oak Lawn Elementary School.
We welcome, or we come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if you three young ladies would like to come forward, I have a certificate of appreciation for you. Now, you have to turn that way. I want to ask you what your favorite subject is in school this year?
Math.
Okay. Delaney? I'm going to ask you the same question. What is your favorite subject in school this year? Math and science. And Samantha, what is your favorite subject?
My favorite subject is reading and art.
Okay, reading and art. All right, now you can stay and watch the council meeting or go home and study your reading, math, and science. It's up to you and your mom and dad. Thank you. All right, first on the agenda is citizen statements to the council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh and the common council, may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements or any candidates or other electioneering. Is there anyone who would like to step forward? All right, now we'll go to the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are those items of routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common councilor requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. One, approval of bills presented by the finance director. Receipt and filing of the common council minutes from September 22, 2015. Approval of cash report from August 2015. Receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company, A. Fred Abler, for alleged damages to his vehicle from a city lawnmower. B. Lynn Reamer for alleged damages from the police department. C. Woss Boiling and Cable for alleged damages on a project due to wrong street records for a sewer lateral. Resolution 15-438. Award bid for cleaning services of shop supplies and uniforms for transit, facilities, maintenance, police, museum, sanitation, water filtration, central garage, wastewater, parks, and water distribution to G&amp;K Services. Resolution 15-439. Award bid for painting of the apparatus, bays and doors for fire department stations 17, 18, and 19 to NJC Painting, Inc. Resolution 15-440. Approve agreement for paratransit services for non-amulatory persons for transit to Running, Inc. Resolution 15-441. Approve agreement for purchase materials with Building Better Together Supply LLC for the Public Works Field Operations Facility Phase III. Resolution 442. Approve amendment to an assignment for portraits, portraits to Gizmo Oshkosh LLC for sludge removal, storage, and land application agreement. Resolution 15-443. Approve intergovernmental agreement between Winnebago County, Whitman Regional Airport, and the city of Oshkosh for installation, maintenance, and operation of a storm sewer. Resolution 15-444. Approve professional service agreement with ACOM to prepare construction drawings and environmental oversight for Jeldwin Riverwalk Oregon Street to Boltworks property. Resolution 15-445. Approve conditional use permit for secondary warehouse used in existing restaurant use at 1414 West 20th Avenue. West End Pizza Plan Commission recommends approval. Resolution 15-446. Approval of special event, Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce to utilize Main Street for 2015 Oshkosh Chamber Holiday Parade, November 12, 2015. Resolution 15-447. Approval of special event, Festival Foods, Oshkosh YMCA, and Oshkosh Boys and Girls Club to utilize city streets for the Turkey Trot, November 26, 2015. Resolution 15-448. Approval of special event due to run to utilize city streets and nominee park for Race the Lake, August 14, 2016. I'm sorry, resolution 15-449. Disallowance of claim by Brittany Fox. Resolution 15-450. Disallowance of claim by Lynn Reamer. Resolution 15-451. Disallowance of claim by State Farm Insurance on behalf of Amy Moon. Resolution 15-452. Disallowance of claim by Taylor Menzel. Resolution 453. Disallowance of claim by Timothy Mahoney. Resolution 15-454. Disallowance of claim by William Newland. Resolution 15-455. Approve appointment to the museum board. And resolution 15-456. Approve special Class B license and operator licenses. Does the council have anything that they would like to have removed or have questions on? If not, I have...
Resolution 15-443. I was just wondering if we could get a little breakdown of the funding on this item? Some of the costs involved with this project?
Sure. I'm going to have Mr. Robbie talk to us. It's about the airport one.
15-444.
443. 443, yeah. This is the agreement between the county and their airport and the city over an easement for storm sewer that's going to be serving the 20th Avenue corridor, which is really the Glass Creek. So, James, if you want to give a little background?
Yeah, the Glass Creek watershed, you know, anybody who's been in the city for a while is very familiar with the flooding that takes place on 20th Avenue during moderate to severe rain events. The Department of Public Works undertook a study. McMahon Associates from Nino was hired to undertake the study. During the development of that stormwater management plan, staff did work very closely with the major stakeholders in the watershed, one of them being Whitman Regional Airport and another one being Oshkosh Corporation, to work on developing flood mitigation strategies to meet the goals of the study and try to minimize impacts to the operations of those major stakeholders in the watersheds. So, as we continued through that process, we stayed in very close communication with the airport staff and airport director, Maul, and as they were developing the plans for the taxiway reconstruction project, they came to us and said, hey, we're working on this project. We think this looks like a good fit to try to implement this next stage of the Glass Creek Stormwater Management Plan. So, to that end, we've worked very closely all year long to try to get to this point where we could execute this agreement with the county to get construction moving forward.
So, the cost in the fiscal impact section, the $38,700, that's a cost that the stormwater utility would incur. We've done some discussions back and forth with the airport about what that amount should be. Ultimately, it came to 25 cents a square foot. The range that they charge their tenants ranges from about 15 to 40 cents a square foot, I believe. So, that's the number that we settled in on. There's also been discussions in the past about trying to recognize that the airport runways could be considered roadways, and that argument could be made to exempt them. So, in a variety of tying some loose ends together, we agreed to accept the 25 cent per square foot cost. The airport agreed that down the road, if they were to get a credit for their stormwater for any of these areas, that this amount would be reduced accordingly.
If they get an exemption from those airport runways.
If they get an exemption for the airport runways. Essentially, this is equivalent to about a 10% reduction in their stormwater costs. But if we were to get a relief sewer on 20th Avenue and we were to abandon that site, we would no longer be required to pay this fee.
And the actual construction costs that are included in the agreement are based on a project that was bid out by the Department of Transportation Bureau of Aeronautics. So, it'd be very akin to awarding a construction bid if we were the contract holder. But in this case, the Department of Transportation Bureau of Aeronautics is the contract holder, so we need to execute the interagency agreement with Winnebago County so that we can pay Winnebago County for our portion of the construction project, and then Winnebago County in turn pays the Bureau of Aeronautics. Because it's a, the project itself, the airport portion of the project is 95% funded by state and federal, 5% from Winnebago County. So, before the project starts, the Bureau of Aeronautics requires the local entity to, you know, provide them the upfront funding, and then if there's any monies left over at the end, then they refund that to the entity.
So, our city cost is the $38,700?
That's the annual cost. The construction cost is the $1.798 million.
There we go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Resolution 15-440. If Mr. Collins come forward. And this is the approval of agreement for paratransit services for non-amulatory persons for transit to Running, Inc.
Sure, I can speak about that briefly. This is one of our five paratransit services that we're required to provide in conjunction with offering fixed route service. So, this would be for non-amulatory riders within the city of Oshkosh, which is one of our five paratransit programs. We did a request for proposal for this service, and we had a five-member evaluation committee which evaluated the proposals, and the committee is recommending that we award the contract to Running Incorporated. I can answer if you have any specific questions. But between the two proposals, the committee felt that Running had done the best job as far as they're offering newer vehicles, they're offering what we felt was a more professional staff, they're offering better service from their dispatchers. So, there were a number of criteria we went through in the proposal, and the overall proposal we felt was a better value for the city.
Thank you.
If you had any general questions, or Running's here too if you have any questions, but if you don't, that's fine. Okay?
Thank you. Are there any public comments on any of this? I'll take it back to the council for a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? The clerk, please take the roll.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Current six.
All right, there were no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll go to pending ordinances. The first is ordinance 15-457. Approve parking restrictions on Nap Street and Wisconsin Street. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment? I'll take it back to the council for a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just that the, I represent the traffic review board on, as the council rep, the council, the review board approved this has to do with a business that's located near that area, and it will make it much easier with the changes.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the citizens who sent an email to let us know of their views on this issue, particularly those that live in the area. So, I want to thank you for taking the time to let us know how you feel about the decisions of your government.
If there are no further discussion, I would like to look for the city clerk to take the roll call.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Current six.
Next is ordinance 15-458. Approval of left-turn regulations on Main Street and Merritt Avenue. Anyone in the public that would like to make a comment? Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second. So moved. Discussion?
Again, Mayor, Traffic Review Advisory Board looked at this. Most of you probably remember the situation. For years and years, you could not turn left from Merritt Avenue onto Main Street. We changed it a couple of years ago, but now with a couple more businesses being added in that intersection area, Skis Meat Market for one, and I think it's Winnebago Bike is the other. A lot more traffic in that area, and with the increase in train traffic, backups were starting to occur as one or two vehicles wanted to turn left onto Main Street. Mr. Collins advised the board that we couldn't really change the lights to make a difference as it would offset the lights on the rest of Main Street. So, the board felt it was in the best interest, again, to put it back to no left turn on the Main Street from Merritt, and it was approved unanimously by the Traffic Review Board.
Ms. Allison Osby?
Well, having had a business on the 400 block, and when there was no left turn, it was certainly a disadvantage. It was a disadvantage for our clients. I travel that area quite a bit. I personally do not have any problems with turning left. However, the feedback that I have received from the public has certainly given indication that they would like to see a change. So, although I don't personally support the change, I had enough feedback from the public that I will certainly be in favor of this, as well as what was discussed at the Traffic Review Board.
Any further discussion?
Again, just thanking the citizens for their opportunity, and the amount of feedback that I've received on this is higher than on a lot of other things that I've heard. So, it's very good to see citizens taking an active role. We read our email. We pay attention to what you're looking for. So, to echo Ms. Allison Osby's comment, your voices are heard, and it does make a difference in your government. So, thank you very much.
If there's no further discussion, I would ask the city clerk to take the roll.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Current six.
We're now at new resolutions. The first is resolution 15-459. Approve settlement agreement with convenience store investments for excessive assessments for tax years 2013 and 2014 for properties located at 215 West 20th Avenue, 2400 South Washburn Street, 2115 Jackson, and 1725 West 9th Avenue. These are known as quick-trip properties. Are there any comments from the public? Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
As much as I would like to say something, I'm going to refrain in order not to be told that we are anti-business, and I will leave it at that.
It's an administrative decision that we really don't have a choice in, so I will have to reluctantly agree with Ms. Allison Osby. It's unfortunate that this burden continuously is shifted from businesses to our citizens.
Just for clarification purposes on the amount again, this will be a fiscal impact of $42,085. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions from the council? The city clerk, please take the roll.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Current six.
Next, we have resolution 460. Approve Millers Bay Neighborhood Plan, which the Plan Commission unanimously and enthusiastically approved. Ms. Williams, would you like to come up here and say a few words? You have some of your Miller Bay members here drafted the plan.
Thank you, Mayor Cummings. I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words. The Millers Bay Neighborhood Plan is the second plan approved under the city's Healthy Neighborhood Initiative. The plan itself represents the neighborhood bounded by East Murdock Avenue on the north, Lake Winnebago, and Menominee Drive on the east, New York Avenue on the south, and Hazel Street on the west. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know there are some residents here tonight to speak, not to volunteer them, but just because this is very much their plan, so staff has been happy to support it.
Renee Lynch, 1265, here on court. I'm here from the Millers Bay Neighborhood Association. First of all, to personally thank Elizabeth Williams from the Planning Division for her support throughout this process, and to also thank the Planning Commission for their approval the other evening of our plan, and now it's before you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't have any questions. I just want to commend you guys on this. I thought it was very well done, very professionally done. It was enjoyable to go through. You hit on a lot of different things, the history of your neighborhood, what events you guys have done. It was just a wonderful, wonderful document, so thank you for all of your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
It's very nice to see citizens taking ownership of their community. I had the opportunity earlier this year to attend one of your meetings, and it was very good to see the turnout at that meeting, and it's very encouraging for the city to see individual citizens banding together to hold their value in the neighborhoods and to maintain their investment in their own community. So, thank you for the plan that you've put before us today, and I look forward to the continued relationship with your neighborhood association.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. We are most fortunate. We do have a lively neighborhood, very, very much engaged, but we also greatly appreciate the support, you know, of the city and the council and all of the people that have helped us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just Elizabeth, or maybe you can answer. I just, a couple of questions. I concur with the rest of council members. I'm just curious, as you talk a little bit about your neighborhood plans and things, you talked about educating local agencies, city government. Were there concerns at your neighborhood planning meetings that the city's not addressing some of the issues and concerns in your neighborhood, or is that just a general statement?
It's a general statement to let people know the resources that are available, and as Mr. Clark has said, is to let people really know that their emails and their connections with the council, you know, they're read and that they are heard. But not all residents know what resources are available to them, and a lot of times it's until they have the big question or the big issues, and that we'd be there with the answers.
Okay. And I know that you periodically hold Neighborhood Association meetings and things. Is there city staff there or other representatives of different agencies that you wish could make your meetings, or do you, after you have the meetings, then you address the concerns with city staff and that? Just kind of curiosity more than anything.
Both ways. We have been fortunate. We've had a lot of events, and we've had, a lot of you have been there for all of those as we're working on the Emmerlin Cook beautification project. We had a kickoff. We've had some general meetings, and you have come as guests, and that is most helpful. And somehow, we know that if we needed any of you to come and, you know, because we had an issue, you've already said that you're there for us, and we know that you'd be there.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks.
Thank you. City clerk, would you take the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Current six.
We're now at council discussion, direction to city manager, and future agenda items. Future agenda items. Mr. Roff, would you like to tell us where we're supposed to be for the next three nights?
First of all, you're supposed to stay home for the next week and read the book that Diane put on your dais this evening. The 2016 proposed budget is there for council and per council's directions, which I think has been very well received by the departments. You're all taking days off from your day duties to be with us on Tuesday and Wednesday of next week, October 20th and 21st, for both days. We had some discussions with staff, and I would say with the possible exception of Public Works, our goal is to discuss both the operating and the CIP budgets for the departments. We think we can fit them in. You know, different departments have, you know, different levels of capital projects. The library has one project, so I think rather than having everybody come back for one meeting to talk to Jeff about a library project, it makes a lot more sense to do it when he's there. So, we're going to do that, and as Lynn reported, she has no capital project, so it'll, so for the other departments, it'll go very smoothly. For James, I think we're still probably looking at November 4th. If time permits, I think our goal would be to give you an overview. One of the things that Steve Goody has done in the past is gone over the five-year, the map, and showed you exactly what the line of thinking was on how these projects were prioritized. And if we do have time during the operating budget discussion with Public Works, we'll devote some time to that as well. So, we'll plan for that, and we, because you're only getting a half hour, we will plan to have lunch brought in for those two days so that we can keep moving along. I know it's going to be a full working day, so we'll make sure that that's done so that you can just take a quick break and then get back to live action.
Well, I thought it was a new department head provides tenderloin and lobster. I thought it was the new rule.
I said it was going to be catered in.
But I will provide pizza on the 4th.
Excellent.
So, thank you, Mrs. Mayor. That's really all I have. If you have any questions as you're going through the budget, please, you know, don't hesitate to let us know.
Is there anything else that we need to bring besides the CIP and this booklet?
Those are the only two. I was going to say the CIP. You said it, so we're covered. So, yeah, bring the document. There'll be, any changes will be relatively minor, so the CIP document that you've already received back in September is still valid for our discussion.
This is the second chance for citizen statements. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidate or other electioneering. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward? Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward? I see no one, so, city manager, announcements and statements. Mr. Roloff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item 29 is a contract we've entered into to do some subsurface investigation. This has to do with the North Main Street pond that we're doing as part of the Perfect Seal project, getting all that stuff in order. It's called the Furnow Avenue watershed, but it really is for the Perfect Seal project. Is that correct, James?
Yeah, it's doing soil borings and geotechnical work just to establish any unusual circumstances if we run into high groundwater or anything like that that we need to know as we're finalizing the design. Now that the city has ownership of that property, we can get on and do this level of analysis so we can finish our design.
And then the, the last item I have is the PFC, the Police and Fire Commission, is working very diligently on the process to do the recruitment for our next police chief. We will be, or the PFC will be holding a listening session on Monday, October 19th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. over at the Willow Room in the senior center. Council members are cordially invited to attend that event. We also have the, the schedule is that, based on a very aggressive schedule, we'll have a deadline for applications at the end of this month. The position's already been advertised in state and nationwide trade publications. So, the PFC would like to interview some of the finalists before Thanksgiving, because after Thanksgiving gets very awkward. So, they got a very aggressive schedule. So, if you also want to keep on your schedule, the, I believe it's the 16th, also from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Convention Center, there'll be a meet and greet. You'll have your opportunity to meet all the finalists for the position. That'll be the night before their interviews with the different panels that the, the PFC has established. The PFC's established three types of committees. One is a community committee consisting of various members of a business community, nonprofit minority community, various community people there, a group of employees. They'll be represented and nonrepresented, and the police, and representative of the fire department. And then a peer group that'll include myself, Chief Franz, where some other staff inside the city from a management perspective, along with an outside police chief to assist us in that process. So, we've got a very high-level group of folks who are volunteering to be part of it, and we're real excited and would love to have the council there for the meet and greet, because that'll be your opportunity to meet these folks face to face. For those who may not know this, and I always like to point this out, the police chief and fire chief are very unique in Wisconsin statutes. Police and Fire Commission appoints the police chief and fire chief. So, after they're done making their selection, then they'll turn it over to Human Resources to negotiate salary and benefits and things. But the Police and Fire Commission is by state statute there. So, your chance to get some face time with the candidates will really be on the, on the 16th of November. So, if it's possible, I'd encourage you to attend. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions about, about the process.
Any questions from council? Anything else? We'll now look for a motion to adjourn in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Turned.[1690.42]